I'd like to call to order the Douglas zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, December 3rd at 7:00 PM. The first agenda item is a public hearing, and I am going to recuse myself from that and turn the meeting over to Vice Chair, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Good luck. No. Thank you. Hearing the first case will be Jim Palmer, Ronnie Forget, Les Stevens, and myself. Margaret, are you participating in this first one? This is for Shady Lane 48?
I don't think so.
So would you like to recuse yourself and go hang out with Dan?
Yes.
Okay.
You don't know, but I'll check it.
Okay. The Town of Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, December 3rd at 2025 in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. To hear the following application. Pensco Trust Company LLC is requesting a special permit in an RA Zone District pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, and the Douglas zoning bylaws, Section 9.3 and Section 3.4.3, non-conforming structures to construct a single-family home on a pre-existing non-conforming lot on property located at 48 Shady Lane, Assessors Map, 148 Parcel 5. Any persons interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. There's a link to Zoom that's on the Douglas website. According to this, a copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. or 1516. The, this was advertised in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette on Wednesday, November 19th and Wednesday, November 26th. Is there anybody here for this? Yep, come on up, just state your name and...
Hi, good evening. My name is Douglas Ward.
Yep.
And I am a petitioner.
We're in receipt of a letter from Allen Engineering, so if you, if you want, I can read that or you can...
Yeah, I think the letter you have probably indicates that we are requesting a withdrawal for now.
Without prejudice?
Right, yeah. We are requesting withdrawal because we received some, some input and we have some changes to the plan, and we thought it would be most appropriate to withdraw, re-notify, and re-file the updated plan with, you know, and hopefully we're targeting getting on the, we'd like to get onto the January agenda, assuming that this is granted.
Yep. That'll be up to the person on the heading of the paper to get all his stuff in order.
Yeah, I'll work with him.
But anyways, just so we can, we can add it to the record, we're in receipt of a letter dated November 21st from Allen Engineering and Associates. It's in relation to an application for a special permit at 40 Shady Lane, Douglas, Mass. Pensco Trust Company LLC, owner's and applicant. On behalf of Linda and Doug Ward, we respectfully request that the zoning board renders the filing on 48 Shady Lane withdrawn without prejudice. The Wards will be revising their house layout and will be submitting a new application in the very near future. We apologize for any inconvenience. We look forward to the, to meeting in January of 2026 to review the forthcoming application. Please feel free to reach out with any questions regarding, and the contact information is sound by Mark Allen. I'm sure you've already stated what you're there for, so, Board members, anybody have any comments, questions? If not, then I would be looking for a motion to accept the request.
I'll make the motion to accept the 48 Shady Lane withdrawal without prejudice request for our December 3rd meeting.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Good luck.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Appreciate it.
Dan, would you like to rejoin us? Take this over?
Thanks, Dan.
Or you want me to continue?
You want to continue?
Is he playing cards?
Don't mad at me.
I think he's going down for coffee or something.
Christmas present?
Now get excited.
Cool. Oh, present him down.
You officially have it back.
Okay, thank you. That was the only public hearing we had this month, but we also on our agenda wanted to have a discussion with Conservation Commission, member and agent, and Board of Health representative to discuss the process and procedures. Steve, yeah. Grab the seat. Is there anybody here from Conservation?
Yep, two.
Oh, two, yeah.
Bring them both up. You guys just drag two chairs up if you don't mind.
I'll take over here.
A little more room.
You guys just want to introduce yourself for the minute taker?
Sure. Jim Horn from Conservation.
Yep, Brandon Fan of Conservation Agent.
Okay.
Steve Donatelli, Board of Health Title V Agent.
Okay, great. So, we've had some issues where people getting feedback from Board of Health, from Conservation, and then from the ZBA, and we had a couple of times that people came in, got their variance or their special permit before they went to your boards, and then they came back and said, oh, they won't let us do what we supposed to do. So we're trying to simplify it hopefully a little bit for the applicants because they're confused and, and we want the process to be as smooth as we can. And didn't know if you guys had any feedback. We're going to try to get some, a new application, ZBA application, and give them some direction because some are coming in, say, I'm all approved by Conservation, some are coming in, I haven't been there. And on a couple instances, they had to refile and apply to move their house because they were too close to wetlands, or they were, had border health issues. So we're just trying to, trying to make it as simple as we can and as smooth as we can, so.
I add a little bit to it, yeah.
Yeah, go right ahead.
So, I spoke with Brandon for a couple different issues, but we spoke about this particular issue and he made me aware of Section 310, I believe it is, that if you apply to Conservation, you have to concurrently apply everywhere else, but it only applies to them. It doesn't apply to Border Health and it doesn't apply to us and ZBA. And the staff is having feedback from applicants saying, well, no, we don't need to apply to the other ones, we want to see if we get our variance first. And that's a problem, right? We can't move wetlands, but we can move a house, right? We, we need to have a better understanding as to what we have to work with in order to make our decisions, and we can't do that without their feedback. So even if it's not a regulation that's required, such as the 310 for the Conservation, maybe there's a joint understanding that if they come to us, we look at it and say, so have you talked to the Board of Health or Conservation? You need to check with them before we go making a decision. And likewise, in return from you guys, that something comes before you, is like, you're going to have an issue with this thing, it gets passed to the, the three different boards, so then at least we can, like we do with planning board, right? So, and put our two cents into it to say, yeah, we have a concern with this, we're going to have a problem. It's more likely a bigger issue for Conservation than it is for us, because you can't, like I said, move wetlands, but it's important for us to have a decision. I know in years past, it was probably 10 years ago, Mr. Stevens had done one here on Depot Street, and he had to be, he couldn't meet a setback, but it was because of wetlands. But it was consistent with the rest of the houses, but we had good information in which to make a decision, and so that's how that worked. But it was through communication that we were able to get there. We're lacking that. We don't have the communication, so we're all struggling, and the staff is getting beat up because we're giving them pushback.
Anyways. Dan, I just, there's always a case you come across every couple of years where a board, town board, so one board would approve Conservation Plan A, and then ZBA approves Plan B, and next you know, that becomes an issue and stuff like that. So I think it's just coordination and stuff like that to avoid situations like that. I think the other thing that's helpful is if you guys, and you know, the nice-to-have or like what the other board's looking for, right? So like septic separation, right, between the well and the septic area would be like 100 feet, you know, those little, those little standards, but some of us, you know, are all up to speed on those, like 50 feet, you know, like no, you know, no touch or no structure within 50 feet. But I think it's just some of those things and the coordination on the plans that get submitted, because, you know, we've been fortunate that we haven't got burnt by an applicant having two different plans and getting one approved by one board and another one approved, and then they don't align, and then...
It's very common.
Yeah, and then it lands a...
It's common.
I'm trying to be nice here, but...
Since I've been on this board with Dan since 2013, he's been adamant about the fact that we try to be as cautious as possible.
Yeah, and then Mr. Frazer's got the, you know, he's, he's going to say, hey, what's the delta here and why, and the cause is a big thing. I mean, I, I've just been aware of it, you know, where I hair cases occasionally every two, three years, but that happens in a community. So we've been really fortunate, but I think to what both Dan and Mike are bringing forward is just the coordination and making sure we're always in step over, you know, who goes first or, you know, what, what should be the process.
I noticed like, not picking on nobody, but I just noticed in a, in a recent application that before it even came to zoning or Conservation, the Board of Health has already approved the plan. And I'm like, how the hell did they do that thing? Because it looks like it's in the no-go zone, what I call a no-go zone for Conservation. So, and I don't know how that works between your two boards, so...
Yeah, you kind of look at it independently from the Board of Health standpoint. It's approved, it meets Board of Health criteria for approval. Now, that doesn't mean that Conservation or any other board has their own independent issues that have to get, you know, addressed.
Yeah, so my, my point in bringing that up is you met it from your, your standards, right? They turn around and say, can't put it there. All right, well, now that interferes where the structure's going to go, so you're just following it down the stream. So if we had some cross-communication, I think it would be very helpful, not only for the staff and our boards, but also for the applicant, right? Instead of getting frustrated, you're going through all this process, get this stuff done, and then find out that you can't do it, and it's a little confusing.
We've had a fair amount of pushback too from the applicants or their engineers saying, well, we don't want to pay to do the engineering for Conservation until we're sure we have a special permit or until, but that's just, in my opinion, it's just a cost of doing business. You know, I mean, you're doing a potentially large-scale, expensive job, and you don't want to spend a little bit of money, you know, to do it that way. But, I mean, Ken's taking the brunt of it, and so is Jen. We're, engineers have actually said, no, I'm not doing it, I'm not going to Conservation until I get, until we get a variance, or we get a special permit. So we're trying to simplify it for everybody involved.
Doesn't that present a, a, a money problem?
Oh, a cost problem for the applicant?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
They would have to write that check anyways.
No, no, but I mean, if he, if he goes, if he goes to one of these boards and they say, okay, you do this, this, and this, and then he goes to the other board and the other board says no, then it could be a big cost over here, so it's going to be...
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, but I'm going to tell you how I think through it, right? So, we have a piece of property.
Yep.
And it's clear, I can see on there by their dimensions that they put on there, that they're within 100 feet of a body of water, right? I know from experience that that's a Conservation issue.
Yeah.
We'll not make a decision on them. I can't, how do I, I can't tell them because it's misleading. They're going on the reliance that I said that they could put their structure there, and now they're going to go see these two guys and the other ones that are with them. And, well, zoning said we could put it there. Well, I don't care what zoning said, right? So now it becomes a rock fight through the whole process, and that's what we're trying to eliminate. I understand there's a, there's a cost of doing business, right? And I'm not trying to make people spend money, but at the same time, procedurally, we need to understand, how do you make a decision if you don't know if he's going to grant relief to Les to put the, the house within that buffer zone? How do, how do you give them permission to put the house there? Because once we make our decision, it's extremely difficult for us to, to change that.
Unring that bell. I, I think it also, to Mike's point, especially if, let's say this board makes a decision, and then they go to Conservation, it, it kind of puts you guys at a disadvantage going, oh, wait, our hands are tied already.
Happens a lot.
Which does, especially with Health, like it's too close to the wetlands or whatever the case may be.
I mean, and I'm just wondering, one of the things that we just did recently on a board was, you know, I mean, I'm thinking of with the Board of Health, maybe we're well, approved under the condition or subject to Conservation and ZBA approval. Period. So you can, you can grant a preliminary approval, say, we'll, we'll grant this preliminary approval under the condition that Conservation and ZBA approve, and that locks the plan in, and that's, that's a benefit of...
And that's on the challenging lot. This isn't, doesn't, most of the time, you don't have to go through this stuff. Sometimes we'll have a piece of property that is under 90,000 square foot and it's in the, in an RA Zone, and so now they need a special permit because they have pre-existing non-conform, right? But there's no wetlands, so it's not an issue. It's only when we get these, every once in a while we get them, that they come in, and especially with lakeside properties, it's, it's a desirable place to be, and people want to build their houses on there. We've had a few of them this year already, right? But Conservation's also been involved in it, and Board of Health has been involved in it, so we know where the septic's going and all this other stuff, so we can make our decisions, right? We just had one up on Northwest Main Street, and I got flack about we didn't make them go to 50 feet. Well, it was reasonable to be at 40 in my mind, because of the way the septic system fit and everything. So, but that was a joint, that one went through the process properly, but they're not all going through, and I think that there's some cross-conversations, interaction with our boards, right? Jen is serving all the different boards, except for Board of Health, serving our two boards, but it's not her responsibility, nor does she take it upon herself to say, hey, Dan, something's coming in on Conservation.
No, it wouldn't be.
It's not the way we do things, right? This is something that the Chairman of Conservation needs to forward, we're going to forward this over, give a heads up to the zoning board that this is coming forward, this is our concerns, what's going to work, right? The applicants got to use common sense in it, is, if they know that they're in an extremely challenging lot, you've got to put your best foot forward, and if it was wetlands involved, that would be the first thing I'd get through before I even went anywhere else, because if I can't build on the lot, what good is it?
Ah, but you have to file concurrently.
Yeah. If, if they... Yeah, but it is what it is, right? So that solves that problem.
But I think filing concurrently is one thing, the other thing is, I think, let's just give an example, so if an applicant comes before you guys and we haven't seen it yet, it's just in that example, right? And you guys say, okay, this is two meetings, right? You know, or whatever it is, look at the DP number. I think one of the questions to ask in, in your Conservation is, have you received input from the ZBA regarding the plan set forth? And because that, you know, or has that process stopped? You know what I mean? So sometimes, you know, if you're too quick to decide, right? Any board's quick to decide, it can set the other board up for undue pressure. You know what I mean? And, and that's, you know, that's just, I think, what it would help. And, you know, I feel bad for Ken because, you know, at the end of the day, if, if something gets changed or everything like that, or becomes an issue and stuff, you know, it, does it work on the site? You know what I mean? One of the things I think, you know, we had a conversation with visiting some of these sites and taking a look at, you know, topography and everything else as, as board members are, you know, and looking at, you know, what's there, see, is this the best plan for the location and things like that, so.
I look at it from, from the zoning enforcement part of things. I'm just looking for consistency. I'm looking for an application that when somebody comes into the office, you're applying for building a new house on law, there's consistency. Some people wouldn't need to do anything more than show Conservation a plan, yeah, you're all set, or show Board of Health a plan, eliminate everything. But the consistency going forward so that that application, when they come in and pick up the application, see what the, it's right, everybody has the same thing on it. It's not a one Z, two Z, or, you know, you don't have to do it on this. Everybody has the same thing, and if it's simply getting a sign off or, or a conversation with a board, that, that's fine. But at the end of it, I've got people that are coming in that say, listen, I've done this another time. I don't care about other times. We're talking about this town here. And when that one person's coming in and saying that to me, and the next person, why I come, well, you didn't make him do it, why do I have to do it? Just consistency, because it's really difficult that best.
Yep.
Being in the position I'm in and dealing with these zoning issues, that I have nothing for a guide that I can give to everybody the same thing. And whether or not you need to have all these things on that particular project, you might not, but it's still the guides to go by.
Yeah, I think, I think what also what your, what your board's looking for, or also what this board's commonly in the past has looked for, like, I'm thinking of like, if you guys approve something and it's like five foot off the property line, you know what I mean, that, you know, you guys could easily look through and go, I don't think the ZBA's ever approved anything five foot off the property line unless...
Right.
You know, but it's just those, those cases like that, because we need to know, you know what I mean, as members here, we'd like to know what you guys are looking for, what kind of, you know, parameters. So if something comes, you know, ideally, you always want an applicant to apply all the board at the same time. It would make sense from the applicant's standpoint, because if they have to change a plan based upon Conservation feedback, they can tell the ZBA, hey, continue me, you know, I just want to continue so I can get Conservation's inputs and changes, and so everybody's on the same plan, and that's, that's the big thing.
Yeah, through the chair?
Yes, great.
Yeah, I guess that the, in a perfect world, once all the boards have made their vote, the plan that is produced is exactly the same for all the boards. That hardly ever happens, right? So, I mean, yeah, you have a situation where, you might have a situation where it goes through a couple of boards, then it finally makes it to Conservation, and then Conservation denies it. Well, that's, it's kind of a tragedy that it had to go that far, but sometimes that's how it happens. What Conservation's performance standards or Board of Health's performance standards are, you know, they're all different. So just because you got approval from one, doesn't mean that you can get approval from the other. You have to hit the trifecta, so to speak, right? You know, sometimes that happens, but what happens more commonly is that Board of Health approves it, and then it comes to Conservation, and then at the last meeting, they make some tweaks, they make that change, but then they don't go back to Board of Health, or vice versa, with, you know, the, you know, however it works, you know, they, they don't go back to the other board for a minor field change or an amendment, because frankly, it's a pain in the butt, and it's more money for the applicant that they don't want to do, and we deal with that all the time. So when I go to a pre-construction meeting and I'm talking to the general contractor, and I say, okay, produce your approved site plan, because it's not our job, it's your job to have it on-site and produce your order of conditions, they'll produce the order conditions, and then they send me a, they give me a site plan, and it's the Board of Health's site plan. And I go, well, this ain't the right site plan. And like, what are you talking about? So that kind of thing happens all the time. So the, the object is to try to get into a situation where we're all talking to each other, so that in the end, our plans are at least as close as possible to each other. And I'm wondering, and I, by the way, I want to say, I, I work in this capacity in some other towns as well, and to your credit, Douglas is outstanding on your communication between the boards. You, you may complain about it, but Douglas does an excellent job communicating with each other, so you should be commended for that. So I guess my question is too, is like, how can we help solve this? And I know you, you use the OpenGov website when applications come in, and I was wondering to what degree that might help the process, am I, or am I crazy?
Nope, I was just thinking, I was thinking the same thing before you started talking, that your, the Conservation end of things is already covered under 3.0.
310.
310, right?
Right.
It could be a, one of the dependencies on the online portal, right? To, to turn around and it's got to go to Conservation and have them, okay, we don't have any issues with this, or it gets flagged, right? It goes to Board, Board of Health gets one in, and you look at it, it's pretty easy, if you're next to a lake, you know you're, you're near water, but is there any wetlands? You don't even have to go through that, it gets sent over. Conservation Agent, whoever looks at the thing and says, yeah, he's all fine there, there's no, no burnout pools and on any of that nonsense, right? Because it doesn't always get identified on the plans. So to eliminate that possi, impossibility, it just, it's just a checking balance, right? Ronnie looks at it, yep, you're good, sends it back. Uh, no, we got an issue. Okay, so now it's flagged, so now the applicant, Mr. Ken, you got to turn around and you got to get a hold of Conservation because it's been flagged that there's, there's an issue with wetlands on your property, right? And then you can make a educated decision if you want to continue on and go down this path.
Yeah, we also, in our decisions, we always refer to the plan that's in front of us. It's approved, based on the plan, dated such and such, drawn by so-and-so, and that may not always be what they bring to another board, but that's what we're doing.
We've gone as far as taking Jen's stamp. If they don't have a date on theirs or a revision on it, we stamp that night, and so then we have a stamp plan that we can refer to.
Ken, did you say? Without overpromising, I believe I can get the OpenGov system to put a checkoff, like you're on a, on a checkoff on a certain application with Conservation.
Yes, I am.
And I believe we can put the Board of Health in there. That could also be the conversation point for the boards with what they're deciding on that set of plans also, but it would be up to the board member, you know, Conservation or, or Board Health or, or zoning board member to look at that for an update from those other departments, and that would be centralized in that.
That can be a lot of work, right? Because you go to, you know, you might have three, four meetings with one board, and each time the, the plan gets tweaked a little bit more, a little bit different, and there's three or four boards. Like, that, that does get to be a lot. You know, I'm trying to find solutions here, and I like the OpenGov website because it's a great clearinghouse. And you're right, that application comes in and I'll get the notification, please look at this, Brandon, can you please, you know, let us know if this application is in jurisdiction, does it need to go through Conservation? Get that all the time, right? But that's usually as far as it goes. When it comes to the final approvals and are we all on the same page, I think that's going to be a little more complicated. I think that the OpenGov website would be the best clearinghouse in which to do it, I just don't know how it would or could be done.
I, I, oh, go ahead, Margaret.
Just based on my experience, usually the lots we have problems with are the pre-existing non-conforming, small lots that have wetlands, and then you're trying to squeeze a septic in there, and then you need a zoning special permit or waivers. So those are the lots that can be problematic, and I kind of agree with what you said, Brandon, that all these filings should be concurrent with each other, because you know, going into that, that plan's going to get tweaked, either by the Board of Health, by the zoning board, or by the Conservation Commission. So it's going to probably go before each board at least twice. But then, you know, when you get towards the end of the process and before the ZBA makes a final decision, you know, you're at the Conservation Commission, you know, the applicant makes sure the Conservation Commission's satisfied, is there going to be any... conservation commission's satisfied. Is there going to be any more changes before they close the sweep? You know, I've, I've had to do it that way, before I go back to the ZBA and say, you know, we're good, there's no more changes. And then you have one plan. You know, I, I mean, and Ken brought this up too before, whether you're doing on the OpenGov website, or you have a checklist. I think that's real important for anybody coming in with some of these, these lots, that this, yeah, you, you file with the ZBA, the conservation commission, and the border health, all at the same time. And then that plan gets massageable before it finally matured to an added expense. And I didn't used to agree with that, but I, I can, I agree with it now. Do them all at once.
And that's a logical approach, sorry, Les, a logical approach. The problem is, is we're getting pushback from applicants and engineers. I don't have to do that. Well, we need to come up with a way to, um, make it mandatory that you do that.
But, but if we have a policy.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is how do we go about that? Are we going to come up with something that makes sense?
Yep.
So that, that's.
Have it as one of the sheets in the application, this is the process to go through.
Yeah.
So it's simple as somebody coming up with that app, inserting it, and that could start within a few weeks, right?
Yep. I can get that put right onto the OpenGov application for zoning board, and everybody gets the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
So you may have a lot that's, you know, four acres in NRA, and there's no wetlands, and there's plenty of room for a septic and everything. So be it, it's easier for you.
Right.
But this is the application process. So it still goes before conservation. It still goes before border health. And if there's setback requirements, who would end up at the ZBA at the end of it? But it shouldn't, to your, to your benefit, it should be the final plan. It shouldn't be revision A, revision B, oh yeah, we're on D now, you know. Well, which one did you sign off on?
So where is the end of the road? Is it the ZBA? Is that the end of the?
Well, when it comes to a zoning application, the ZBA, I believe is the end of the road for it.
After the ConCom and after the border health.
I believe.
What, excuse me, but what's different from what we do now? You have to go to conservation, you have to go to building department, and you have to, um, talk about your wells thing.
Ninety percent of the people do this.
Yeah, it's a 10%.
It's, ninety percent of the people will do that.
Oh, okay.
We, we haven't had a huge problem with it.
Yeah.
Recently, we've been having pushback from applicants and engineers stating, I don't need to do that. Okay? And, and the problem that I, I have personally, sitting there looking at the plan, is we're not talking about conservation, we're looking at, uh, where we're going to allow this structure to be, right? I also see border health has already approved, different things, components, whether it's a well or a, or a septic, or repair on a septic, whatever it is, it's already been done, right? So now those are already located.
Yeah.
So now it's changing the envelope altogether as to where we can put the structure, right? But I'm also questioning, well, if this didn't go to conservation, how'd the well end up there, right? Because if you're not, if you can't go in that area, how do you get the truck there? You're going to come in with a helicopter, right? So it, it's just communication, and it's, everybody's working within their scope of what they do. So I'm not picking on that. What I'm trying to do is get more of a team effort, so we can work together. It's better for the applicant. It's, it's, it's not to incur more cost on the applicant, it's, it's to make the process so it's fair to everybody, right? If they, they go in, if you know you're the applicant, you're coming in with a lot, and you're like, I'm just gonna, I want to see if I get a variance first. Um, sorry, Mr. Floyd, you need to talk to conservation too, and you need to talk to the border health, right? Okay. You don't have to spend a penny yet. Any chance I can just talk to somebody in conservation, the agent or somebody, just to get an idea of whether or not this would even work? Can I talk to somebody in the border health to tell me if, if I'm nuts?
Yeah.
Right? You don't have to spend a penny to do that, right? And if Brandon or Steve says, yeah, I think that'll fly, that's not a guarantee, you're going to have a challenge, right? Depending on any given night, what mood Mike's in, right? Um, it's reality.
No, but it's reality, right? Let's be honest about it.
Um, they're not deciding for the board. That's why when we asked for conservation to come tonight, um, I said, that's great that Brandon or Sam can come, but they're not voting members. I need somebody that actually participates on the board, right? I would have liked to have somebody from the border health, um, board itself come as well beside yourself, because you're only approving.
Yep. You're a hundred feet.
Yeah.
Good to go.
Right? Um, that doesn't help us, right? Because there's other issues that, that are before you even get that plan, that they should be addressing. So now you got to try to relay that back to them.
Correct. We need everybody's approval before they can start the project, so.
Right.
Where, does it all come together?
Yep. I, I think when you know, uh, when you know something's going to have to go before the ZBA or conservation, it might be worthwhile to say, uh, you know, preliminary approval under the condition of ZBA and conservation. I'm thinking of a couple, couple cases.
Well, don't even approve it, just pass it along. You, you have any input on this before I approve it?
Yeah, yeah.
Planning board does it with us all the time.
That's true. That's true. Yeah.
Like if it's, like, when it has to go to, um, conservation, I always stamp it has to have conservation approval. I stamp it on the plan. So make the applicant aware. You have border health approval, but you need to go to conservation.
Appreciate that.
So that goes on the plan. So they're not blinds, you know, I'm setting my approval from the border health, I'm good to go.
That's what we get from the applicant, is that, oh, border health already approved it.
Yeah, well, I, I always stamp it, if that's where conservation, I can see that right away.
We get that a lot. Come on, it already, it already went through planning, it already went through conservation, like, what's your problem? We get that all the time.
Yeah, well, you know what I mean, and I'm thinking of a couple scenarios in case, especially with the smaller lots and stuff like that, or all along the water, where, you know, it, you could run into a situation where the well is better to be down by the water versus a septic is down, being down by the water, right? Because, you know, conservation boards usually go, oh, you know, this last place we want the septic, you know what I mean? But then the applicant could say, well, I'm going to have a burden if I have to put a pump system.
Correct.
Right?
Correct. Happens all the time.
But that's, you know what I mean, part of it. You know what I mean, of, but it makes it easier.
Well, down hand, did you approve this one?
Knowing that their approvals, you know, under preliminary approval, basically, to you guys' approval. So you guys could say, hey, sorry, you're going to have to get the septic go back. I mean, because it would only make sense.
The reason why I'm asking you, this is how we.
You know, um, but, you know what I mean, but overall, you know what I mean, I think, I think to what.
I had something similar.
It's ninety percent of applicants kind of follow the thing. It's the, it's the outliers of the 10, um, or the ones that are pushing back, not realizing that it causes undue pain. You know what I mean? And I think the thing we've, we've been fortunate is trying to avoid is approving and then you guys are stuck, or you guys approving and then.
We're stuck.
We're stuck, you know what I mean? And so, but if you guys approve something, and we're not on board with, we'd have to say, kick it back to you guys. The key is, is the public hearing open and closed, or they're going to refile, you know what I mean? So I would almost say an applicant, not even coming before you, let's say they get approved, hey, um, you don't have ZBA approval, we'll leave your meeting open.
Yep.
You know what I mean? Just in case you've got any changes.
And a lot of people don't like to do that. They want to close, like, they want that, they want to get that finalization, like, can you just continue it one more hearing? And they just, they don't want to do it. Like, go back to ZBA, make sure everything's all right. If there's any tweaks, just make them in their interim, and then come back to us with a tweak. We'll have Brandon look at it, you know, in, in the two weeks between the two meetings. But they don't, they don't, they just don't like doing that.
Because, well, I mean, they run the risk, right? Because if it comes here, and we've got to kick it back to conservation, you guys close, they're going to refile.
Correct. Or at least file for an amendment, which, again, is, and then you have to re-notify all the neighbors, you have to put a legal ad, and another public hearing. And if you have a large property with a lot of a butters, it's, it's just, it's a total pain in the butt, and nobody wants to do that. But that's the risk that they run, because they're adults, and they're big boys, and they should know this stuff.
So while you guys were talking, and I walked over and I, and I talked to Steve, I showed him a plan. I said, this is being submitted to us, or was submitted to us. Did you approve this? And he doesn't recall if he approved it or not, which doesn't matter, that wasn't my point. My point was, this is how we get it. It doesn't say whether or not it was approved.
Right.
But I'm looking at a well that's within 25 feet, in the 25-foot buffer zone.
Right.
Which you guys would have a current, right?
Yeah.
So.
Some cases, yeah, 25-foot, no touch, 50-foot, no build, for residential. Yeah.
Right. So, uh, this, and this is the point, right? And it just wants some joint communication to keep us all out of.
So how can we do, how can we do that?
So we can, we can always tell the applicant if it hasn't been approved by the guys or whatever.
Well, you guys are tough there.
I know, I know.
Because they have to apply to us, right?
Right.
It's.
Drain.
But it's important for you guys to understand what we're looking for, because we've had them come back, and we commented, and conservation doesn't want to approve until you guys.
Everybody's riding up.
Several times.
Correct.
We can't do it that way. We can't move the water, but we could, but then we'd get caught, and we got to reclaim it.
A simple stamp, conservation approval.
Pending.
Pending all board appro, all required board approvals. And that could be the stamp for border health, conservation, any other department.
Yeah.
That one stamp, pending all required.
Yeah. It's preliminary approval only. May I interject?
They can say, as conservation, they're approving it as long as all of the.
That just has to be cleared through land council to make sure you can legally do it that way. You can't just.
Preliminary approval.
It might sound great, something.
Through the chair.
Our ideas aren't always good.
So it, it would be, basically just, it would be kind of a pretend approval, because it wouldn't be a real approval, right? But the thing is, once there's an approval with conservation commission, the clock starts ticking. We have 21 days in which to issue the order of conditions. If, if we don't, they get constructive approval. Uh, and if, if there's an appeal, uh, it goes to DP, it, as it gets taken out of our hands. And if we miss the 21-day deadline under the bylaw, we, we forfeit the right to enforce the bylaw. So obviously don't want that to happen. So any kind of preliminary approval would just have to be, like, in spirit, which is the same thing as saying, why don't you just continue for another meeting, go back to ZBA, and see what they think?
Yeah. And I, oh, I think.
Yeah, and that's what's happening, but then we won't think, because we haven't got your opinion.
Yeah. That makes it tougher than that.
So, so what?
I'm just telling you, that's what's happening.
So do you want to make an order of operations? Because we, we already have it in, in the well and regulations, 310 CMR 10, that one must apply for other, uh, quote unquote, obtainable permits, local permits, at the same time as you submit your notice of intent. And it only applies to notice of intent. We have other kinds of, of application types. It only applies for the notice of intent, which is the more complicated. That's when you get closer to the wetland, and you need, uh, more comprehensive review. Um, but you have to apply to other boards for, uh, quote unquote, reasonably obtainable permits. So border health, planning board, CBA, those, those basically, maybe historical commission if there's something really going on, but, uh, you have to do that. So then the question is, who goes last, who goes first? So is, should there be an order of operations?
Sounds like.
Protocol?
Well, it, it sounds like that you, you, your 3.10 should be in the border health as well as in our process, you know what I mean? That now everybody's filing concurrently, you know what I mean, um, to start with. And then I think, um, yeah, you know, we have to be the last stop because of the decision, but we have to be, our decision has to be with, close to your decision, because we're both on clocks.
Right, right.
We're on a 21-day clock, we're on an appealed clock, you know what I mean, when we.
Well, after the close of the public hearing.
Correct. You know what I mean, so it.
Well, the border health's been under that restriction.
No.
No.
No, you're not under that restriction, but like, the plan that I just showed you, so let's assume that it was approved, right?
Yes.
And he's already said that the 25-foot is a no-go zone, and that 50 is a no-build zone. And it's clearly halfway in the 25, so you're about 12 and a half feet.
Which means they would have to apply for a variance to the, the standards under the Douglas Wellness Protection Bylaw, which they may receive, they may not.
No, I know that.
Right, so.
But it's problematic that, let's assume it got approved, then you go, you're good to go, you meet the title five, there you go, you're good to go. But now it's a bigger problem, because now they go over there, um, and say they came to us, and we said, okay, yeah, you can put the house there, and you said you can put the well there. And then they go to these guys, and they're like, ah, no, out of the pool, right? You're not putting any of this stuff here. This is what we're trying to avoid. So the, the pennies that you save on, on the front end will cost you dollars on the back end trying to correct all these problems.
Right, right.
So I, I don't know, it's got to be some joint understand, uh, joint communication, not understanding, joint communication between our three, three boards. So then, if, if something comes in and you know, if it doesn't show any wetlands on it, but you know that it's on Wollam Lake, on Shore Road, on, on the, um, west side of the street, you're close to the water, guy. The lots are only 50 feet deep. So, uh, did you talk to those boys over there at conservation yet?
Through the chair, Mike, you just hit it on the head. I guess, really what you need is you need people either on the board or, or the agents, who understand not only the, the rules and regulations surrounding their area of expertise, but you know enough, at least enough about border health and ZBA and planning board to be dangerous anyway, to know when these situations happen. And not, that doesn't always happen.
That's Ken. That's Ken's role.
That's Ken's role. But Ken, Ken doesn't have nothing to do with Steve's role. Right? So I'm not picking on, I'm not picking on Steve, I'm just trying to.
I do, I do have a, a strong tendency to, like, see something, a question, a question, see what you.
And he does.
I find it.
He does.
Yes, he does.
Yeah, I know.
He picks up the phone.
Yeah, I don't do this. I pick up the phone.
Yep.
But a lot of pushback has been from the engineering firms, we've been, like, we're not going to put our client through the cost of conservation until we know for sure we have a variance. It's like, really?
Yeah.
If I may, through the chair, I, I think maybe the way to start is like, let's get that, uh, that checklist, and put that into play, put that into play, and then, and see how it goes, and then.
Get the checklist. I, I think also we should check with, um, land council to find out if we can make a regulation for, uh, for, uh, our board. Um, and maybe border health could do the same thing in theirs. Um, that would require, that if it's obvious, obviously you have to go through conservation and do, make sure that they understand it. We don't have as big a problem with conservation going the other way, because they have to, um, apply concurrently anyways, but.
It's baked in there, yeah.
The, even if it slipped through the cracks, they can't build anything until they get past him. And he's not going to let them go past if it, if it doesn't meet the, the tables, right? So, no, but that's his job, right? That's what he needs to do. Um, anyways.
Yeah, that's, well, you know, Mike is highlighting there, is, I think it's, it's those cases where someone doesn't file with conservation, and then the decision comes to you guys, and now you're even stuck, right?
Yes.
And that's, and that's what we're trying to avoid. I think that's, because you don't want to, you know, have anybody making a decision before, you know, in the right order, right? Anybody jumping a decision in, in that situation. I think that's the, the main thing, but it's coordination at the end of the day. Um, and, and, you know, and somehow, you know, we're, we're lucky Ken's on top of it, you know what I mean? But sometimes, you know, with like anything, you could have one get by, you know, and, and so, you know, we got to be fortunate enough to catch it, and keep, keep checking. Maybe, maybe every six months, we have a check in or whatever else, you know, things that we can approve on. But, um, it's, it's 90% of the applicants kind of follow, follow the thing. It's the, you don't want to penalize and put a board in a tough spot when they got to approve something, because.
All I'm looking for is consistency. The more building that goes on, as we all know, the more building goes on, the worse the lots are. And it's just going to be some that's going to continue to get worse and worse as we go on through. The, the fields of meadows are gone. Now we're building upside the hills and, you know, up against the water. So I'm just looking for some kind of consistency. So going forward, I don't have people in the office screaming at me, saying, I'm not doing this, and I'm not doing that. Show me where I have to do that. If there's something that shows. If there's something that shows where they have to do that, guess what? You have to do that.
Right. Yeah, that would be nice. And through the chair, checklist? And what would this checklist look like?
It'd just be part of the application process.
Okay.
When we're in the.
All the way down.
When we're in the paper world.
Let them finish.
Oh, sorry.
It'd be bulleted out all the way down. These are the items that you need when you're applying for a special permit or variance with the Z.B.A. that in, you'll say, "Well, you know, I'm in the middle of 100 acres." Maybe so. But you still get presented to the board so that they see what's there, and they can say, "Okay, yeah, you look like you're going to be okay." But we don't know. The zoning board doesn't know, and I mean, I'm using numbers that are fictitious. I mean, typically, the zoning board's in pre-existing non-conforming. When you get into the bigger lots, the zoning board doesn't even see it. Unless they can't beat this setback for some reason. But, you know, these non-conforming laws, that are typically teardowns along the waterways and in, you know, real tight communities. You take the terrace down on Wollam Lake, you've got septic wells all over the place. You're also on part of the watershed into the lake.
Yep.
You know? "Well, I'm on the top of the hill." That doesn't, that's not necessarily true. Try to explain that to somebody. "No, I don't have to do that." Well, you should check this. I'm telling you, this is what you got to do. I think if somebody has a good engineer, they should be able to guide their client. You know, "You do have conservation issues here. You do have, you do have zoning issues here, but..." I think a lot of the feedback has been, we're not going to incur the expense. It goes along with filing with Conservation until we know we have the variance of a special permit, and we've, you know, pushback.
I apply in a lot of different towns. It was this way with paper, and now it's this way electronically, that it goes to, all the different departments have to check, sign off on that. It goes through it, right? So, I apply for it. I'm going to put a house on 29 Depot Street, right next to the town hall. But I'm going to put that there, and then when I put my application in, it's going to go to Water Health, and they're reviewing it. And then if it's a go, it turns green. And then it goes to Conservation, and so on and so forth down the road. Something like that would be very helpful because then everybody gets to see it. And you're going to know right off the bat. So, if something comes in, 29 Depot Street, and I'm going to put a house there, and Conservation gets it and says, "Whoa, whoa, 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 whoa. There's a little stream out back. It's a cold-water fishery. You guys got to be away from that." "Oh, I didn't know it was there." Right?
Not just that, but there's heightened stormwater standards because you're next to a cold-water fishery.
Right.
So, I can say, in our standard permitting process, that does happen. Goes to Conservation, goes to Water Health, Tax Assessor, and all of them. And they do click agree. I'm looking for something on these zoning board applications. What I'm looking for. Standardized on a zoning board application. And like I said, that can be attached to the zoning board application, just like we do the regular permit. Again, it would probably be, you know, with exception if it's on a waterway or something or whatever. Yeah, that doesn't appear, or it could be a possibility. You got to do a, you know, a request for determination. But that would be answered by Conservation.
But you said on a regular, so you're talking about a building permit application?
Yeah, standard, not zoning board required, don't.
So, standard being a building permit application? Okay. So, that's what I'm talking about, is the same checklist would be on Water Health, it would be on the zoning board or whatever. So then, people are putting their eyes on it and say, "Yeah, you don't have, I don't have any issue with it. It turns green, it moves on to the next one." Right?
But that's going to be, and like I said, we can apply that to the zoning board application. Leave Conservation or against zoning board applications, would you check off on?
In the OpenGov?
In the OpenGov.
Yeah, well, we see them all. It's just, we see the same materials that everybody else does.
You don't see any of the plans, you only see the application.
No, we see the plans. Yeah, if it's an attachment.
It's all in the portal.
Yeah, if it's an attachment in the OpenGov, what I do is I go straight to the plan. Yeah, myself.
You do the same thing. We can, I don't know, Water Health's on the item. We can put Water Health on, and it's just turn green, check off. And there've been applications that have come in that you flagged and said, you know, and you can follow the conversations because you can do public and private conversations right on it.
Yeah, and that's what I do, is you could make your comment public, or you can make it private. I learned the hard way, I like to keep it private internally. Because soon as, yeah, then you get people getting angry. So, and I'll spell it out, why I flagged it.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm amazed when some of the plans come in from engineering firms that, you know, there's a lot of guidelines and understanding, like what boards have accepted or digested over the years. And, you know, point in case, like, you know, I don't want to, seven feet off the property line, you know, and coming before the Z.B.A., it's like, uh, they have a, you know, why risk if it's a new structure and stuff like that? Or, you know, putting it, you know, 30 feet away from the water, you know, even though maybe the existing structure is 50 feet, you know? The encroachment. So, I'm always amazed of, you know, the lack of, I think, that the engineering firms' understanding of what the boards has.
If I may interject, sometimes I know exactly. They just want to see.
If they can get.
They just want to see if they can push it.
Right. And if they can't, then they just charge the client more. We had to revise it. It wasn't accepted the way we proposed it. It's game.
Yeah, all these Conservation tree-hugging people, oh, terrible. You know?
If I may.
Yeah, you are.
I know. I know.
Inside voice, Mike.
I couldn't resist, sorry.
So, if I may, if you're on one of these small problematic lots, okay? And you need a waiver or a variance from the wetlands for the septic field, or you need a variance from the Conservation Commission because the building's going to be within that 50-foot no disturbance, and so everybody's coming to zoning and say, "Well, let's move the front zoning offset instead of 50 feet to 20 feet so we can address their concerns." Which takes precedence.
Right, Margaret. And sometimes, the Conservation Commission will say, "Yeah, you're not meeting our setback. Have you attempted to obtain relief from zoning for your front yard setback?" And then, "We don't want to do that. Just give us our decision." It's going to say, "Well, then you're not going to get the answer you want." But we ask people, like, "Have you attempted to get relief from any other board before you ask us for a variance?" We get that too. Do that too.
Got a question through the chair. Brandon, you might have seen this, and this is a conversation that came up really regarding small lots. The percentage of a new structure going on a small lot.
Percentage?
Yeah. So, let's say it's a 10,000-square-foot lot.
Lot coverage.
Oh, lot coverage.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't, single-family house lots are exempted from the stormwater regulations. So, it really doesn't matter what the lot coverage is for a residential. You have to exceed four residential lots for stormwater to even be considered. Commercial, industrial are considered right from the get-go, but single-family house lots are exempt.
But the Conservation Commission wouldn't allow clear-cutting of this lot that's right on this hill that dumps right to a lake.
Correct.
You would expect some type of stormwater controls.
And, which is one of the reasons why we have a Welland Protection Bylaw, is to add those extra, what do you call them? Bumpers?
Buffer.
Yeah, bumpers and buffers. Yeah.
I can say, in the aquifer protection, there is a lot coverage caveat in it.
Yeah, I'm just curious on that because, you know.
We have a house that's in one of our major aquifer protection areas down in southeast Main Street that wanted to put an E.D.U., as you're familiar with. And when you start figuring out the impervious surface that's been put on the lot, they exceed what's allowed in the aquifer protection area.
So, it's more on these restricted lots, right? So, I use the example of Les' property, that, the house that you did on Depot Street. And he was granted that, he didn't have to go to Conservation because it was clear that he was within that, and it wasn't unreasonable because it was consistent with the rest of the houses on the lot, right? So, there's common sense that's being used in it. It's when you have these real challenging lots that we need joint communication across the board. It's not every single one that comes through.
I just want to, I did file Conservation on Hall 3 because it was.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, yeah. Because, again, no build within 50, you know, we're at 51, 52. But what it caused was, was, you know, to cause the hardship, which triggered the variance needed for the frontage. But I think that's, and to your point that you highlighted earlier, Brandon, was, you know, in those cases where you know that your board's not going to be on board with a plan, and so, "Hey, you're going to have to go to Z.B.A. to go get a variance because, you know, you can't be encroaching on where we don't want you to be." You know what I mean? But also, sometimes I think, you know, what we also occasionally see is, I'll say, superstructures, you know, where it's an oversized house going on the lot, and it's positioned to create more of a hardship and stuff like that on the board's front, you know what I mean, where they're dealing with.
Well, I can say from zoning enforcement, I've never seen anybody want to build on a pre-existing non-conforming lot and build a small structure that's on there.
Oh, now he's throwing his phone.
Okay. Now we've got to start. Maybe we can work on a draft or a checklist?
Yeah. Get some feedback from Land Council as to what we can actually legally do and not But I think it was a good conversation, at least we all understand each other's challenges.
Yeah. I can give you an example, Mr. Chairman. I have not, and the Conservation Commission in Sutton has not spoken to the Board of Health in 15 years. Because we flagged a site and said you should come in for an RDA. And the chairman at the time thought that we were just out of our mind and viral Nazis, and said, "We're never sending you a routing slip ever again." They don't use OpenGov. They're still physical slips. So, they don't send us one. So, that's how it's been. So, what you're doing here is great.
Well, just to save us all a headache. And that's all this is about, nothing else.
And we've been also trying, like, on the board to be very consistent on the same thing for everybody going forward instead of.
Yes.
This one gets a special treatment for this, and this one that. It's kind of like all for one, one for all. So, we've been trying really hard to.
And if you issue a variance, there better be a really good reason.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, cool.
Should I?
Anytime.
Appreciate you coming in.
Glad to do it. Have a good night.
Thank you. Yeah, next item of discussion is North Brown LLC. Guys. Yeah, that's the.
Yeah.
Mike, you missed one. Cool enough for you, Tim?
What's that?
Cool enough for you lately?
Ah, it is, yeah.
Wait till Friday.
Yeah. Wait till Friday.
Six degrees Friday morning.
Yeah. We wanted to get some more paving done, but it doesn't look that way. They're going to close the plants, the 19.
Charlie? If this keeps up, maybe sooner.
How far are you making it through now, Tim?
With.
Paving.
Paving, well, we were going to pave the sidewalks at Village. Yeah, we were going to get those done before the end of the season, but it's just not going to happen. We wanted to try to get a day above 40.
Good luck with that. I'll just wait till Les comes back.
Yes.
My nose on.
I can't tell. It's cold this early. It's going to be snowy and cold.
I know.
Excuse me. We're not digging.
No.
We're working on stuff we don't have any foundations we're going to put in until next spring, I don't think. We're finishing up a bunch of jobs. No, it's not, because usually we have, usually.
I'm going to wait for you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I was just.
Couldn't think anymore.
Oh, I just.
So, I guess we had a number of items to go over tonight.
Well, thank you for having us. Good evening.
Thanks for coming. So, I guess one thing that's been going back and forth for quite some time was the lighting.
Yes. If you want to start with the streetlights, I got a quick handout. That will bring us to a, how did we get here?
Thank you.
Save you some steps.
Thank you.
Don't forget Ronnie.
Thank you.
So, how did we get here where the streetlights are being considered not correct? So, in, we have a cover sheet, and then backing documentation in the back. So, in 7/12/17, we installed the streetlight bases as reported in Leonard's daily construction report. Then on 7/20/17, William Kundav asked when we were going to be installing the lights on top of the poles. And then on 8/1/2017, the streetlights were inspected and shown on Leonard's report, so they were deemed approved. On 8/17, Bill was asking more questions. Did Engrid inspect them? So, just showing that Bill was aware that they were installed. And there are photographs in there showing the streetlights that we did install. And these are all in Leonard's daily reports. Then we go all the way up to today, 7/7/25, eight years later, we're informed we installed the incorrect streetlights. It's a deficiency.
Go back to, and you said that it was deemed accepted or approved?
Yeah.
Where? Was it on?
It's on Leonard's report, showing that the streetlights were installed, and they weren't, it wasn't a deficiency. So, if you go to C, and read the highlighted area, light poles have been installed on Road A, and it shows the stations, and then it shows the lights. To me, that's approved.
Well, this is a construction report.
Yeah, that went to Bill Kundav, who was the approving authority at the time.
Where are these lights on any of the plans? On the plans that from?
Well, there's, the original 2009 set of plans have that detail.
So, in November, I think it's November 2010?
Yeah.
That final set of plans?
Yes.
What's on that one? What's on that one?
That's the nylon light.
You can talk me through it.
Yeah, that's the nylon, nylon.
So if that plan was approved in 2010-
Yeah.
Does that supersede this 2009 plan? I'm just asking you a question.
Well, I don't believe so. Because Haley Ward, Leonard Engineering, and I have been working off the 2009 set of plans. Haley Ward received the 2009 set of plans from Bill Kundav. Bill Kundav saw the lights that were being installed and didn't flag them as a deficiency.
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that, that is approved. I, I, even see that they're installed, doesn't mean it's like-
If they're not the ones that were approved, doesn't mean that they're-
Yeah, it means it says lights were installed.
They, what makes that the approved plan? And it's been eight years now. In eight years, these lights have been looked at, I've been asked to install more, and no one's flagged them as a deficiency? It doesn't seem fair.
Wouldn't that fall back on you, Tim, 'cause you didn't install the lights that-
I never received this set of plans. There's this 2010 set of plans, there's only one sheet in that has changed, all the dates are still the same as my 2009 set. There's only one sheet that's changed and nobody, including your inspecting engineer, has that sheet.
And what is that sheet?
That shows the new light detail.
Okay, no, I'm just-
Yeah, that's the only one. There's only one sheet that's changed in that, and that's that one sheet. So it's, I don't know how we got there, but it seems that Paul Huttnack from Heritage Design Group and Bill had a meeting after the comprehensive permit was approved, they added that sheet, and it never got to anybody.
So the, so this plan, so we're gonna have to dig into it, obviously, because if the plan is approved, now I'm like, who approved the plan, right?
Well, my, my recollection is-
To the board, I can get the set of plans. Well, it's got with the sheet on it, with the approval on it.
What's that?
I have the set of plans with that sheet in it, in my plan draw with the stamp on.
Right, no, and, and Tim's not denying that that plan exists.
Oh, yeah, it exists.
No, he's not denying that it exists, what I'm questioning is, approved by who? Right? So Bill, historically, when, because I've been on this since you put the fresh shovel in the ground, I wasn't on at the, at the onset of this 2009 concept, but since you started, I've been involved in it-
Yes.
On the board. And Bill didn't make any of our decisions, we made our, the board made decisions on everything that we changed, including your five-foot increase on the houses, the, the side entrance with the, with the roof and the structure detail and, and the length of the driveway and all that foolishness that we went through, right? Bill didn't make any of those decisions, that was a board decision.
I agree, but Bill also never brought that plan set to you to be approved.
Well, this is, so this is what I'm-
It never came to you.
This is what I'm questioning, we're both questioning the same thing.
Yeah, they say, how, where did it come from?
I need clarification as to where this plan came from, because, like with anything, the first thing I look for, and I do it when we're sitting here, I go right to the right-hand side in my title block, any revision dates on it, right? We know what our plans are on our decisions, and say the plan dated such and such, what a revision date of this, so that way we have accurate plans. So now, obviously, if I got on in 2013 and you just started digging until 17 or 18, there's no way I would've seen that plan, right? So.
And just for clarification through the chair, you made a statement of Paul Huttnack, Heritage Design, right? Put the 2010 extra page in, who did he work for on, on behalf of?
He worked for us at that time.
Just, just for the record, just for clarification?
Absolutely.
And something like that? So he, he was tasked somehow to, to add that page and add that detail in for some reason or justification?
I can't see Bill approving anything without it coming to the board.
No, no, I'm just, just trying to get how the page got there and who and how.
In the amended MOU, it says in the MOU that "The determination of whether a deviation from an amendment to the plan is substantial shall be made by the Douglas Town Engineer."
Well, it may say that in there, but I know that things have come to us and we had to decide whether it was a minor or a major change.
Bill would bring those to you, yes, that he wasn't comfortable making.
Yeah.
But Bill would make decisions on the fly, in the field.
What I'm concerned about is what Les just brought out was, your engineer, working with the, with the, the town engineer-
Mm-hmm.
-generated that plan, but he was employed by you, your engineer, so why didn't you, I'm just asking.
No, I'm not arguing that.
Why didn't, why didn't your engineer bring it to you and say, I'm making this change? Because to go from a granite post to a substantial light that's 18 feet tall, that's all cast aluminum with three-quarter inch, 18-inch anchor bolts on the bottom four of them, to be exact. And this is why I question the lights, right? Because there was a big difference between the two lights, and that's where it came about.
I agree with everything you're saying. Why didn't it come to us? Why wasn't this plan made the plan a record? There's no documentation that goes to that plan date that makes it the plan a record.
You said it had one in your office, what, who was it stamped by, Ken?
I can get it, I, I-
It's stamped in by the town, but everything's stamped in by the town.
No, no, no. Stamp and a revision date.
Yeah.
Let me go get that.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, but it's stamped in, but it doesn't make it the plan a record.
No, no, what he's doing is, the engineer's stamp on it, the wet stamp that's on it, whose name is on that.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what he's asking, he's not asking about the town stamp, the town stamp.
No, Paul Huttnack's wet stamp on it.
Yeah. It's, it's, through the chair, it's just puzzling that the creation of that page, something triggered it, right? Give me, like, give me-
I agree that the page was created and it was asked for, but what, how come it was never brought to our retention in the entire eight years? And how come the town inspector, Haley Ward, who was this, doing the site inspections, they weren't provided that plan from Bill? They were handed the same set I was working from. Bill was working from the same set I was working from, or else I wouldn't have had these lights in for eight years.
Who do you use for an engineer now?
Uh, well, Mike Labby and, Paul didn't go to Allen, but Mike Labby did, and he was part of the Heritage Design Group, they went, they broke up.
And he didn't know nothing about the lights?
No, nobody did. And Allen doesn't even have this plan sheet, and the plan sheets all faded, it's not even a crisp copy, and it's the only copy that we have is the one that is in the office. So this plan set came out in 2025, oh, by the way, everyone's working from the wrong plan set.
But, but that's the only delta, right?
That's the only plan sheet that changed, everything else is the same.
Okay.
What started this was concerns and all these complaints that we've been getting, so it talked about the lights, all right, so you're talking about the lights. So, um, speaking for myself, I don't know what anybody else done, but you say, well, it's just the wrong microphone, all right, what's it supposed to be? Show me the paper. Show me, show me the paper. I go through it in my own business, that's not right. What does the plan say? Right? That's the first thing, what does the plan say? That's our little bible that we go by, so that's what I went to, and then I found this thing, and Neil even had a meeting, and I stated at the last meeting that, oh, we can't get those lights anymore, they're obsolete. Not unreasonable from 2009 until now that it would be obsolete. But then when I seen this crystal clear plan down there that actually shows the company the, all the deep, because I couldn't read the other blurry, even with reading glasses, I couldn't read it. Holy shit, I can read this thing. So now, huh, Jen, do me a favor, reach out to that company, hit the model number and everything, see if that light's available, and the light's available. So I brought that up to Neil last, last time we met.
In response to that statement, I agree with you that it is available, but the reason Neil and I both said it was unavailable, we cannot get a response from that company. I brought emails with us tonight that I have emailed, I have called, the nylon company will not respond to us. I called their distributors, I have a text message from him that he's gonna call me, never calls me, and then I finally spoke with one gentleman, and he's like, oh, well, these are municipality lights, that's probably why nobody is dealing with you. They're usually sold to municipalities. They're lights for downtown Boston. That's where you see them, they're up there. So here is my correspondence trying to get a quotation, and I'm getting crickets.
Yeah, so I did speak with that gentleman down there at one point, and I didn't call from the town of Douglas, I called down there, and I asked if the lights were available in an LED version. Yep, there, and there's a couple different versions, okay, that's all I wanted to know, that, yeah, I didn't ask any more than that.
There we go.
I will say that I called a couple times before I got a hold of them.
This is the original plan set for 2008.
But I did speak.
The sheet was added, sheet 26 of 38, Huttnack Design Revision PBH 111010.
I, I agree that that's there. Usually when you do a plan set, the revision date is carried through on every sheet, the latest revision. So then we know we're working, every page is including that. They did that on the front, here, but it doesn't carry through to all the other revision dates. And I'm not disputing Paul didn't provide this plan, I'm not disputing that him and Bill went over this plan set, I'm not disputing it wasn't stamped in by the town of Douglas. What I'm saying is, where is the documentation that makes this the plan a record for the development?
What plan and permit, what plan was submitted on the permit?
The 2009 plan.
That's where we stop. No, no, no.
The 2009 plan set is the one that was submitted with the-
So we have the only 2010 plan set, and you have the only 2009 plan then?
Correct. No, 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 you're inspecting-
Because he's saying that it doesn't happen.
No, your inspecting engineer is using the same set I am, the 2009, and please verify that with him.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm gonna-
He was handed that set by Mr. Kundav.
Can I ask a question? The set that you're working on, does it have a light detail?
Yes. Yeah, it has this light detail. And this light detail, by the way, is still on that plan set, so you have two light details.
This don't make any damn sense at all. It's, how many?
We've been going through this forever. It's, this, this isn't an easy job. The work itself is not bad, it's all this other nonsense that goes along with it.
Yeah, well, 40Bs are not easy.
I have that one right now.
There's a lot that goes into-
So now, this is different than the other one that was submitted, because the other one had a round shield with, with the, with the bulb underneath it.
Oh, no, that would, this is what's on the 2009 plan.
No, but we had received a plan that had a metal pole with the round shield on the top.
I submitted some variations of different lights for you to consider. And I'm not, I'm not disputing that, okay, maybe the, there isn't enough lighting, how can we make it better? I'm not saying we can't improve it.
What's the height of these existing lights that you have in there?
I don't know exactly.
Six feet?
Six, six, yeah, yeah.
All right. What's the height of this thing? Well, so this one here that you gave us has a 20-foot pole.
Well, maximum, 20-foot high.
Okay.
There's no minimum.
But it's safe to say that it's designed to be height in six feet?
Yeah. Again, my point is, we installed lights in 2017, they were inspected, they were looked at by your review and the peer engineer, and in seven, and eight years later, I'm told they're the wrong lights.
Okay. Where's the plan with this light?
Huh?
Where's the plan with this light?
What do you mean, the plan?
That little goofy thing with all the lines on it over there? The plan.
No, what, what plan? What do you mean?
Well, here's a light, right?
Yeah, yeah.
There's another light on that page, where is the plan that shows this?
It shows a granite post?
There's a granite post with a six-foot light.
This is that, this is the same top that's on the granite post, it's just a different post.
Was, yeah, was that in any of the file?
Yeah, that's on the 2009 plan and on that plan.
Even though they-
This one is?
Yeah, yeah. No, this one is. This one, that was deemed to be close enough to this that it was accepted. When I put the first light in-
Verbally or was that in writing?
It's in writing, it's deemed approved over the time period it's been installed and it's been inspected by your inspecting engineer. If I had put those posts in, right, and I installed them, Haley Ward came out, looked at them, and then Bill said, no, those are the wrong ones, take them out, we would've taken them out. I was asked to put more in.
Well, who's, who's, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Who the hell is making the big disturbance about what the hell the lights are supposed to be? Where's the confrontation?
Well, there's confusion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't say confrontation, we're all confused.
Well, there's concerns raised by the residents of, of the development that made us start talking about these lights. We didn't choose, choose to have a conversation about these because we haven't talked about lights the entire time we've been on this. I don't recall ever talking about lights on this project.
But is, is, again, is that a condition, a negative condition that happened because that thing turned into a big you-know-what show? So let's, let's move on and just get the damn, some, who's gonna put the lights on? Get the damn lights up there. How many meetings are we gonna have about lights up there?
Well, a lot of the people who purchased property, they complain.
Yeah. So where's the, you gotta find out where the hell the problem is. Why aren't they there? I mean, I, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, like, maybe I was, I, I had an apartment up there, you know? Where, where do I go to see if, I mean, it's, it's been, what, at least a year or almost two years we've been talking about these lights?
No, no.
It's been a long time.
Over the last few months.
Well, it's longer than that.
Okay. All right. So anyway, so I'm gonna answer your question, Ron, sorry, Tim.
That's okay.
Is, all, in order to say I accept it or I agree with it, I'm asking a real simple question, we're, we're on whatever plan we're using, and that has to be determined, that's not gonna be determined tonight, because I need clarification as to, my, me personally, I'm not speaking for anybody else, which plan is it we're supposed to be working on? Now, anytime I've worked with plans, it's the latest revision date. How your engineer, you've already stated it multiple times, didn't give it to you or make you aware of it? That's a problem between you and him, right?
I think so.
Okay.
Because what I'm, again, the point I'm making is, where is the documentation that makes that plan set the plan set a record?
Where's the documentation that says it's not?
Well, exactly, but I, well, because your town engineer and your inspecting engineer have the same plan set that I'm working from, the 2009 set. They weren't, Haley Ward was not working from that plan set.
And Allen Engineering's working from the 09 plan as well?
Yes, we all are. And the only difference, just so we're clear, that the project wasn't built with the wrong topography or anything, is only that one sheet.
Yeah. So I'm just, you know, wondering, right, the cause of the change of that sheet, page 26, to be updated to November of 2010, was most likely a conversation-
Yeah.
-to cause the revision in some manner.
Well, was it a revision? Was that just brought in by Paul Huttnack? Was that just brought in by Paul Hotneck?
Well, it's got a revision on that page, right? For some particular reason, as well as on the main page, correct?
Yeah.
So it was a revision, you know, in that manner. So something...it doesn't take a rocket scientist to realize something triggered it.
Absolutely. But why wasn't it brought to everybody's attention years ago? We're not talking months. We're not talking weeks. We're talking eight years. It is brought to my attention now from the inspecting engineer that I'm using the wrong and he was using the wrong plan set. He says it in his report.
Yeah. But, and the challenge of that is, is that, you know, I don't want to speak before the board, but sometimes that falls upon the applicant because if I turn around and get an approval from conservation and then I've got to change it with border health, it still falls on the applicant.
Well, in construction, once you have something inspected, it's deemed it's approved. If you get an occupancy permit, the house is approved. After eight years of something being in construction, it's actually six years. If something's been installed for six years, it's deemed approved.
Ken, to the chair. Does anybody know when Heritage Design liquidated, broke up, whatever? And maybe there was a lapse of time between, maybe that was in that same era, and it never got, I'll say, fully brought forward to all parties involved. I don't know why it would have overshot them, but I don't know when Heritage...
I'm not sure.
Do you know that?
No, I don't.
I don't either.
So that could be... I could find out, but I'm not really sure.
Right, because it's three or four years ago.
It's when Lance...
No, no, no. It's been...
Oh, no, many years.
It's been many, many years.
Probably eight or 10.
Yeah, it's all when this all happened.
It's going to take a little digging into it, okay? So, yes, there is an inspection report that shows a light, right? And you've been with me and Dan for a very long period of time through this process, right?
Yes, thank you.
Unless there...yeah, but unless there was, hey, we've had good time there.
No. We're all friends afterwards.
But the bottom line is, what I'm getting at, is unless there was an issue, we didn't focus on things, right? So, there's a light. Okay, there's a light. Because there was no issue. It's just, it shows a picture of a light. It wouldn't mean anything to us to see that light in there. So what I think we need, Mr. Chairman, is clarification. Jen can look through the file. That light didn't just appear over a casual conversation. Hey, Les, by the way, I want you to put this Boston Street Light in there because it looks cool up on the Common, right? There had to be some communication, and if it's in an email form, it would be in that file. There's one thing about Bill is, he was pretty adamant about being very detailed. So if we could look in to see if there's any backup documents to find out why this plan even appeared? Why does he have it and nobody else has it? How come we don't have an '09 one? What was applied for when it was submitted for application for construction back when Larry Lynch started and then Capeline came in? Oh, Adele was in?
Then Larry.
Then Larry, then Capeline.
And we had some...
Mark, Capeline.
Four Clover?
Four Leaf.
Four Leafs.
Yeah. Four Leaf was after Capeline. You had Neil from Four Leaf.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I agree, but the board is busy. They're not out there weekly, daily inspecting. That's why we hire a review engineer to oversee oversight for the board. These are the inspection reports over the years. I have over 100 of them. But it's his job, right, to pick out deficiencies.
Well, so, we need, as a board, we need to understand how we got to where we're at right here. And it's got to be some supporting document. You can't just... That's a substantial change to that light, this light, or that other one with the little globe on it.
Right.
How did that even get in there and nobody...there had to be quite the conversation, and there's a lot of work just to put all that detail in there.
I don't know. I had a lot of dealings with Bill Cundoff, and I don't think one day out of the clear blue he said, you know what? I want you to change the lights up there. It had to come from the other side, in my opinion.
I never said, let's change the lights to those Nylon lights.
But I don't think...
Something's triggered.
Why would Bill? I don't think he would either.
I certainly didn't do it. Why would I want to change the lights to something that is exorbitantly more expensive in an affordable subdivision?
Just through the chair, I think what will probably be helpful, right? Because we're not going to resolve it tonight, is, you know, us to look through archives. You look through your archives, the email, whatever else, to see if there's a Cunda female out there regarding it, right? Some paper trail. I got a simple question, too.
Sure.
How many granite lights are currently installed? Ballpark. I'm not going to hold you to that.
Eleven.
Huh?
I think eleven.
Eleven, okay. I mean, again, you know, whatever rectifies the situation, at least we can say, okay, what if, and how do we, you know?
I think eight.
Eight? Okay. So it just makes it easier to say, okay. It'd be worse, right? If you had 50 of them in. And then it's like, wait a second, I got 50 of the wrong lights, right? You got eight in at this point in time, and then it's just trying to figure out what's the go-forward plan and what can come up from there.
Sure. That sounds fine.
You know?
I just want to know what's supposed to be there. That's all it is. And I think we're all confused as to what's supposed to be there at this point. So there's got to be some sort of paper trail to get us to where we're at.
Very good.
The...we're going to talk about the bond issue?
Yeah, please.
Nope. The...Haley and Ward submitted something to us, but he's the peer review. Who submitted something to them?
What do you mean?
They're the peer review. They're not the engineer up there, right? So they did a...they're the peer review. So they're looking at what your engineer would submit, right?
Haley Ward, how it usually happens is, the town's review engineer does a complete takeoff. So for the asphalt, Haley Ward did a bond estimate. So he went around and saw everything that isn't done. Then he puts together an estimate of what he thinks that work will cost. And he does it for prevailing wage. And then he adds a 10% contingency and a 10% overrun, excuse me, escalation. And then he determines the bond amount. And then we take that from your engineer, not ours, and we submit that to the insurance company.
Did he get his figures...I wish he was here. Did he get his figures off the MassDOT website for the weighted averages bid prices?
Yeah. It's right here. It's in his report that the estimation of probable construction costs utilizes the Massachusetts Department of Transportation weighted bid unit prices and includes a 10% contingency and a 10% administration fee yielding a suggested bond amount of $300,000. That's in...do you want?
No.
But that's in his report, in his bond estimate. So that's what I turned into the insurance company, and then they wrote up what we submitted to Jen to submit to Town Council for approval.
Yeah, I think that... Does he have any oversight figured into his proposal and all that?
Yeah, everything's there. That's all in this.
The...you're going to redo that access road?
Yes.
Take it out and redo it?
Yes.
So you have to do another filing with Concom?
Yeah, I would think so, yes.
Yeah. So does he have engineering figured in for that?
Yes.
I'm just asking.
More questions than answers tonight.
This is interesting. It's in our packet. It's a November 1st, 2010 email from Mr. Cundoff. Pretty close to the date on that plan.
I agree totally, yeah. That was submitted by us.
Yeah. No, no, just, again, Dan, if you've got a good email archive, I've checked your email archive, too, because you're copied on that.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
But it doesn't have the plan date.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, it doesn't have the plan set.
Yeah.
That's why I submitted that. Usually when somebody writes a letter like that, they will put the plan set on there. Bill didn't.
Yeah.
Which is odd.
He could have, again, given the benefit of doubt, right? He could have waited for the set to come over, whatever the revision is or something like that, so...and that might have been...
But then he should have added the date.
Agreed, agreed. Like, you know, so I think it could be possible. I know, it's a long time ago. It's 15 years ago.
It is. It is. And if after I had the first light pole I got installed, they said, whoa, you're using the wrong one, that would have been fine.
Well, I'm glad you're only going to eat it.
Well, I'm glad you're glad. I'm not.
No, no. It'd be worse if you had 50.
But there's not 50 up there, but...
How many are there? What's the total number?
He hasn't had the long relationship that we have.
Yeah, for the whole development. 15 years ago, more than that.
Yeah, I think eleven.
How many for the whole development?
Eleven.
Actually, you know, all roads.
Yeah.
Really?
See what I mean? It's more volatile. Just saying, it seems...
Yeah, it does, but...
So they're road lights or they're sidewalk lights?
Well, it's a condominium.
Really?
Safety lights.
It's a condominium. It's not a thru.
Well, see, maybe Jay has some response to that or something.
And then also in our permit, it does say to use low lights for light pollution. They don't want...
But you copied on it.
You know, you don't want the place lit up like a baseball field.
Well, if you use that kind of a light, you put it up high, it's not going to reflect down at all.
So...
Yep. Correct.
Get any light out.
Agreed with that. I agree the tots should be changed. There's not enough light coming on.
Yeah. How many fixtures are supposed to be installed?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Total.
Total. Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's eleven.
I thought it was 12.
12?
Twelve.
Okay. He said there's more questions than answers, so...
But I would like to get the bond approved. We've got to start building.
Did Town Council review that?
They looked at...they looked at it. Adam had responded back to an email, and he used the figures from Johnson Court's paving project that they're doing right now. And they're similar. The concern is that that was the low bidder on that project, okay? And that's not typically how you would set up for an RFP, right? You want to try to go as low as you could. And I'm not...just hit me out. I'm not trying to inflate it. That's one concern that I have on it. And the other concern is, we started this around 2018, the project?
Yes.
2018. So that's seven years ago. You get three phases done. So that's an average, we'll just call it six years. That's two years each, right? So you've got two years in which to complete Phase Four. And the values today in two years won't be today's value. So I just don't know if that's covered in there for any potential escalation. I know you get the 10% contingency.
Yeah.
But...
The other thing that's in here, in the permit itself, is that board is holding the last four occupancy permits until the paving is 100% complete. So that's also a double...
What prevents you from not building those last two...
Last four, it's the last four market rate units. I wouldn't want to leave that on the table. That's where the...we're only coming into...
That's a question that I need to ask you.
Yeah.
So I'm not trying to be difficult.
No, not at all. I understood.
So I'm not a fan on occupancies for a contingency. I don't know how they even...or how they even came up with that because you just get to the end and you just don't build them, right? I think they did that on Isabella, didn't they? Isn't that how that last lot became available? There was something screwy with that one.
Yeah, this, well, in every subdivision, you know, I mean, even Conservation Drive, a bunch of ones, you know, that was back in the day that used the value of the lot as part of the bond. You know, there's rest on both sides, right? Everybody involved and stuff like that. So, but no, no, I think what...
I mean, I don't doubt that you're going to finish it.
Yeah.
But I need to ask the question.
Oh, no, I don't mind. What I was saying is, you're holding an insurance bond for $300,000 and a covenant for the last four occupancy permits.
Okay.
So it's extra insurance.
Those are four full-price units?
Yes, four market rate.
Okay.
Well, we could change it.
Say, a couple million?
Yeah. Yeah, yes, it is. Yes. Yeah, it's $2 million.
Okay.
That's a good way to present it, that it's extra insurance. Yep. To the chair, is there...I know you guys made it a lot headway on the paving, you know, I mean, everything else out. Is there any other major issues or not any pending items? I don't want to make a question, but pending items in Phases One through Three right now?
That need to be completed? No. No, we have minor maintenance stuff that needs to be done every year, every season.
Okay.
But other than that, no. And it's provided in Haley Ward's deficiency report. What I'm trying to do is reach a point of completion for Phases One to One Three so they are completed.
Yeah.
And that's why we decided to pave those areas. Let's just get it done. And unfortunately, we didn't get the sidewalks completed before the end of the season.
On just one phase left, or...
The sidewalk binder is in for two phases where it's been installed. We were going to top coat that and the Boulevard entrance. But we will do that in the spring.
Okay. So, did you see this email?
No. What is it?
Take a minute, just look through. Particularly, and Dan needs to take off for a minute anyways. I gave him a little reading to do. But the last page is an interesting, the interesting part of that.
Yeah, no, I have not seen this.
You can keep that if you want. I don't care. I won't need it in my packet because I keep the packets. So that's the...what I'm having to read an email, and it's from Heritage. A document in there from Heritage, and it's in everybody's packet, that states that that plan set is final plan set. So that's my concern. So now I'm trying to figure out how you got to where you're at now, right?
Yeah, that's what's confusing to me.
And I'm not denying it, but it's just through this whole process, it's a complicated project. So we only address issues. So, we only address issues, right? So, unless somebody pointed out that that wasn't the right light bulb, there would, there would be nothing to tell me to question it.
Yeah.
So...
I agree. My argument is it is the right light bulb. It's been in for eight years. It's been inspected and approved by Town Engineer and Review Engineer.
So, it's been, it's been noted on inspection reports.
Mm-hmm.
There needs to be a set of plans that shows that light.
I don't think so. Because Bill had the ability to make those decisions.
Well, that was prior to me getting on the board, but I'll, I'm going to insist that they dig into it and get some clarity on it, so...
But for argument's sake, for argument's sake.
Yeah.
Let's say you are right. Let's say, what compromise can we come to so we can move forward?
Yeah, I think, I think that, I think that's, at the end of the day, what has to occur, right? At some point, some...
We've always tried to have a work... Sorry, Les. We've always tried to have a working relationship with you. But Jim touched on one, one tractor in this, is that light that's on that plan, right? The light that's on this plan, even though it says maximum on it, do a similar thing. It's, it's an elevated for the downcast to illuminate a larger area. A, a light that's at six feet high, it's going to downcast this way. It's not going to illuminate the area.
Okay.
So, that's one of the challenges, right?
Yeah.
As to figure out that part of it. So, what I shared with them, Dan, was out of our packet. It's just an email, and it states that that is the final set of plans. So, we've got some homework to do to figure out how I got there. Tim's comments or countercomments to what I said is Bill had the ability to make changes. There has to be some sort of document somewhere that, that state, whether it's an email or something, there has to be something. He couldn't just verbally say, "Yep, go ahead and do it."
He wouldn't.
He would.
He wouldn't. We all know Bill. Bill wouldn't have done that.
Then why didn't Bill? Bill also wouldn't let us get away with one inch of anything. Why didn't he speak up? Why isn't there a deficiency sooner than eight years?
Can't answer that question. Yeah, I guess the bigger question is, is why didn't your, your representative bring it to your attention that he made a major change to your lighting plan?
Yeah, I don't know.
Right, I know that.
We're both saying the same thing. I don't know.
I know that.
Yeah.
So, we...
But here we are.
We can all go back and forth.
How do we move forward? What would you like me to do?
We've got to figure, figure out if we have anything that shows the change. That, that's the first thing. I don't think that we're able to make a decision saying, "Okay, it is what it is," type thing, right? It's, we have to, we're accountable, right? So, you got to deal with us. We got to deal with the residents up there who are accountable to this whole process. Same thing with the buildings, actually. He's got to deal with the residents and us and you, so...
Well, that's every project.
Yeah.
But I'm not drawing a line in the sand. I want to figure out how do we move forward.
Yep. Agree.
And that's what we're trying to do. This is the first time we really had a conversation. All right, so this is what's going on, right? We didn't have that up to this point.
At first, I, yes. It took us a while to dig into it and find out where did everything come from because I was confused when it was brought up.
Yeah.
Just through the chair, I want to say, we're fortunate that it's just one page.
Agreed.
Do you know what I mean? Let's be blessed here that this being the final plan and everything like that and done and with the engineer creating it, it's only one page. It would be a lot more challenging if you guys are working on, you know, if there was like six pages that changed, you know what I mean? And so, so we're at least a little, little blessed in that, in that aspect, so...
Anybody have a clue what those lights cost?
No, that's what I've been trying to find out.
No, but it, it's not going to be cheap.
No, I understand that.
They cast aluminum. They're, it's a substantial light. And that's what made me question even more when I finally seen this plan. I'm like, this is nothing, something's wrong here.
Yeah.
Because it calls for 18-inch, 3/4-inch diameter anchor bolts for them in the base of this thing.
Yeah, so, yeah.
This is a substantial light. I don't even think a Toyota Corolla could take it out.
Don't say that.
It's a substantial light.
And when I talked to the representative from Nile, and that's what he was saying, that this was an unusual light for a condominium project, and that it's a municipality light, and they usually sell to cities and towns.
Yeah, for bigger, bigger street, bigger areas.
Yeah. So, if we can find something in between, you know, we would love to entertain that.
To the board. Tim, did you check pricing on the other lights that were originally that should go with the 20 foot poles on us?
No, I have not. No. But I, I want to, not to sound like your earlier conversation, but I want to see what the board wants to do before I put a lot of work into it.
Yeah, welcome to my world.
But back to the bond. Where are we with the bond? It's with Town Council?
Last night, that's what sent it.
It's with Town Council, yeah. That should be solved pretty quickly.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll just wait to hear their response?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wonder if you could reach out to Paul Hotnax if he has any recollection of how that happened.
I can talk to Paul. Yeah, I think he's an expert now.
He is.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't...
That might give us some answers.
Okay.
You know, if he says it was, whatever, brought on by whatever, we, we have, can put, have some closure on what happened.
Yeah, yeah. Good idea.
And it may be worthwhile.
Try to figure it out.
Yeah, I think it may be worthwhile to look at alternatives if the one that is in the plan is an overkill, right? Maybe for a major route, you know, you know, three lane or road or something like that. Even the current one is, you know, it, you know, not, not efficient. So, you know, maybe trying to find at least a couple options. It might be worthwhile, you know?
Okay, I will do that.
No, I mean, because that's what you're look, you're kind of looking for as well.
Exactly.
That's something that's a little more digestible for the area. If it's too bright up there, too high, or it's a major thing that's major for Route 16, you know, or downtown area. I mean, I'm trying to think of, Holden, when I went through Holden, they've got these massive lights that are huge and they're open globes, you know, in a residential area, or you might not. Yeah.
We will do that.
How are these granite posts set? Are they in concrete or are they on...
Yes.
So, they are.
Yeah.
So, then there's no bases for the other?
No. No, we just pull them out and put bases in. What would I do with myself?
Oh, you'll find something.
Figure out something if you survive.
It'd be almost when you're at the last eight units.
Well, that's where it's going to be tough, the last four units.
Yeah. You guys have a schedule, I think, for, you know, we are almost entering next year. You guys have an estimated schedule of some of the work that you alluded to, working on paving and, you know, all this stuff. It's just, you know, I'm not saying a hard date, but you could just, an estimated saying, hey, what to do in April, X, Y, Z, or...
We wanted to pave the entirety of what's installed in the sidewalks, which is the Boulevard entrance and Phases One and Two. Top coat the sidewalks, and that would complete the paving for Phases One and Two. But we just didn't make it in time.
Yeah.
We couldn't get into the schedule. So, it's going to be early April that we'll be paving those. And then as far as the Boulevard entrance, we won't do that till the end of the project.
Till the end?
Yeah, because we're going in and out, in and out. We're just going to destroy it again.
Yeah.
You know, the binder is down for Phase Four, so Phase Four's infrastructure is ready to be built on.
Okay. All right. I haven't been up there a couple, several weeks, so...
You still have stockpile material there?
Yeah. Yeah. And some of that material, we've run into some ledge on that side, so I got to save some in case we have to replace unsuitable to suitable.
That's fair.
How's your rain garden, Neil? They finally settled down?
Yeah.
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 You had a couple problematic ones last time you were in that you were just trying to get corrected.
No, they're all operating properly.
They're all working good.
Yeah, everything's working now in the rain gardens.
You ever get Pam that address?
No. No.
I had it, Dan, I had it. Every time we talked about the rain garden. Tim, you got that address? Flashbacks, right?
Yeah.
I know you miss it.
No, I didn't. I didn't want Pam driving up there.
All set? Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Have a good night at the time.
Yep.
We have a lady with us, too.
Oh, sorry, gentlemen.
Yeah, don't worry, Tim. She's just a voting member.
Well, I do get nervous.
All right. It's the last, the vouchers have been signed, and we want to...
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Review and approve, potentially approve the minutes for October 1st and November 5th.
Has everybody had a chance to read October 1st?
Well, I have just one comment on that one. I do remember at the item number one for the, the request for variance for the height of that building. We had concerns about making sure that the fire department, there was coordination with the fire department, and they, and they assured the board that the fire department's requirements will all be met.
For, for the, for the proposed building, but that doesn't, we don't oversee that piece of...
No, we had concerns about, because we were, they were asking us for a waiver for the height of the building.
Right.
We had concerns whether that, you know, the fire department...
So, we had, we had talked about that. They have a 75-foot ladder that starts at 12 feet high. And they had come in with their calculations at six feet high. Todd Murray had, had said that. And I had talked to the deputy fire chief prior to that meeting because I had the same concern, right? And she, she was confident that it wasn't an issue for her.
So, do we want the meeting minutes to reflect that?
Well, it's in, so, minutes are just a general overview, but the recording did capture all that.
Oh, okay.
We did talk about that.
Okay.
So...
We get anything in writing from the deputy chief?
Did we get anything?
Yeah.
Well, I think they, we said at, or they said at the meeting that it has to be approved by them anyway, so...
Well, they would have, they would have to approve that when they get to the building.
Right, exactly. So, it's not...
They still got to deal with him. I mean, Ken.
They can't move forward until they...
Yeah, all, all light safety will ultimately be gone over and reviewed, and none of that, none of the permits be issued. All aspects of building are, okay, covered.
So, and I just want to go back to what Margaret asked about the meeting minutes. So, anything we add to the minutes, we have to make sure that it was actually talked about in a meeting. You can't, you can't add something just as an afterthought.
No, no, but they did give...
But we did talk, we did talk about it.
All right, so, we have the meeting minutes here, and then we also have the recordings then, if we needed to, whatever.
Yep.
So, it's not just the meeting minutes.
Yeah, no, the meeting minutes is just a summary of, of the meeting. Sometimes you'll, you'll see meeting minutes, depending on who our minute taker is, and it'll be verbatim. And then you'll see other ones that are extremely vague. Yeah, Les was there. And that'll be about it. Because as long as they captured when the meeting was and when the, and the time and everything, the recordings are always kept.
And it's just as valid as these written?